Okay. I want to report out the vote in the executive session on the police dispatch contract. It was a unanimous contract approved by the town council tonight. It was a four-year contract, our first four-year contract. And the raises were zero for the first year, zero for the second year, 2% and 2.5%. This contract's been in the works for about, since April, I guess, right, Bill? So it's been going on quite a while and I think the town made out pretty well. The overall increase, I think, for the town is just under 3% when you take out FICA and the pension benefits to the employees. So it's a win-win, 2.87, I think Bill quoted. So it's a very good contract for the police dispatchers and we're happy about it. And that's that. Any other?
Frank?
Yes. Okay. And I want to thank the union for their cooperation, too. I went to one meeting and it was very, very interesting. I learned a lot and I want to thank them for their contributions as well as the chief and the manager and the solicitor. Okay? Thank you. All right. I want to call the meeting to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to sit as a leading board?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
First up is liquor license renewals. Open a hearing on renewal of the following liquor licenses. Class A, Hopkinton Liquor Depot, Lynn Marie Finn, president. Hopkinton, Inc., 229 Main Street, Ashaway, applicant, present. Village Place LLC, Edwin Russell, president. 999 Main Street, Hope Valley. Mr. Russell, okay. Okay. You guys?
I'd make a motion to have a renewal on the Village Place LLC.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any questions, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Class BV, Brick Oven Restaurant, Keith Knott, president, Brick Oven. Keith, yeah, I see Keith. Charahoe Grill, Daniel, I see Daniel. Fenner Hill Country Club. Lucky House, Danny's there, yes, okay. Pavilion Steakhouse. Okay. Wood River Golf. Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to have a Class BV license for the Brick Oven Restaurant, Charahoe Grill, Fenner Hill Country Club, Lucky House Restaurant, Pavilion Steakhouse, and Wood River Golf LLC.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any council discussion?
Question, um, could, uh, Daniel, Daniel, could you tell me about the Charahoe Grill, what the status is?
Should be open the first of December.
Can you come up?
Should be open the first of December.
Okay. I know you came in, boy, what, April, maybe?
Yes.
To see us. And I live right up there, so I go by quite often. I thought, geez, who's going to get?
We've been waiting.
I like to give.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Well, it's all right, we're waiting.
We had, we had some problems with the bank and we were able to finally close on it. So we're pushing for a December 1st opening and to move on.
I'll be there.
That's good to see. It was good to see this here because we hadn't seen any action. We're worried about it.
Well, we've been working inside, so we, the outside was a little bit trying to make all state codes and meet all the codes and get the inspections that we need.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I'll sit.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next up is Class BV Limited License, Main Street Pizza. Chris Walensky. Chris, okay.
I make a motion to give a Class B Limited license to Main Street Pizza.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, Class D Full Privilege. Gordon Green Post Number 27 on Thelma Drive, Hope Valley. Home from the post. Okay.
Was someone you?
I thought.
No.
Is anybody from America?
No.
Do we want to do a motion to set a limit on liquor licenses? We're going to have to take out one on Class A and the Class D for the moment?
Yep.
All right, so a motion to set the temporary limit on liquor licenses of Class A one, Class BV limited one, Class BV six, and Class nothing or Class D.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion?
Yes. They currently, these two businesses currently have a liquor license that runs out. Does anybody know the date when these licenses run out?
November 30.
November 30. Oh, okay. Very good time to come back. That's what I needed to know. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's all delicious. We go to all of you.
Okay. One thing, Frank.
Yeah.
Could I ask, Chief, how's Gordon Green been as far as corporate side?
He hasn't had any problems at all.
That's what I want to hear. Okay, thanks.
Very nice.
Okay. Next up is vicualling license renewals. Open a hearing on renewal for the following vicualling licenses. Brick Oven Restaurant, Main Street, Ashaway. Captain Dave Seafood, Alton Bradford Road. Charahoe Grill, 14 Spring Street, Hope Valley. Duncan Donuts, 231 Main Street, Ashaway. Fenner Hill Country Club, 33 Wheeler Lane, Hope Valley. Lucky House Restaurant, 32 Main Street, Ashaway. Mom Pa's Country Cookin', Main Street, Hope Valley. Mom Pa's Country Store, 1044 Main Street, Hope Valley. Main Street Pizza, 229 Main Street, Ashaway. Pavilion Steakhouse, 15 Frontier Road, Hopkinton. Pete's Grocery, 244B Ashaway Road in Bradford. Spring Street Market, 1 Spring Street, Hope Valley. Wes's Bakery, 995 Main Street, Hope Valley. Whispering Pines Corp., 41 Soul Mill Road, Hope Valley. River Golf, 78A Woodville, Alton Road, Hope Valley.
Motion to grant renewal to the licenses, subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes current prioritization.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any council discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
My move that we adjourn to the licensing board and reconvene as a council.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is it possible to speak at council?
Sure. Council.
Yeah, and I'm Ed Russell with Village Place downtown across from the fire station. Last year I mentioned taxes and I want to mention them again so that you know what a relatively small business is absorbing. This year to date, without including additional property taxes which are coming and excluding state taxes, we've paid about $3,600 all in, all done. Now, that does include the tax for the fire district. But to us, it's all the same regardless of where it's coming from. And I just would ask you to think about the burden that that represents on a small business like us versus other small businesses that are sitting in this room. This is a very large burden to carry on top of what you have for the business. We are a commodity business. We sell commodity products. If you don't like getting them from us, there are other liquor stores around where you can get them. So personalized service is very much what we do. But these numbers, as they come at us, are significant every quarter that they come or every month that they come. And I'd just like you to think about that in terms of what you're trying to do to bring additional businesses into Hopkinton. Thank you very much.
Can I ask Mr. Russell what the, could I ask you what each one of these taxes are that you're talking about?
Sure.
Have you got them broken down?
Yeah, I do. The fire district tax is about $1,204. The Hopkinton number is 825. And then the property taxes quarterly are 764.
What was the Hopkinton number you said? What is that?
825.
825 is the property tax?
No. That's the tax in addition to the property taxes.
That's the tax for the liquor license?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So in one sense, you've got Hopkinton Liquor, you know, discount liquor up there, which is an elephant, and then you've got us, which is a mouse down a Main Street, and yet I believe we pay both the same number. At least we did last year. I don't know if it's the same this year. I would think it probably is at 825.
You realize, you realize we've gotten rid of the holiday sales tax?
Yes.
Which was onerous as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, I appreciate that very much.
That's, that's the kind of steps.
And I also want to tell you that the property taxes have gone down from last year and we appreciate that as well. I'm just saying, you know, I'm not here to whine. I'm just saying, if you think about this and what it means to attracting additional businesses into the community, it's significant, particularly when many of them are small businesses.
And it's the same thing for the residents, too. Or you, if you lived in town, for the residents who owns a business in town. I mean, we know it's difficult. The 825, the liquor tax, we don't have any effect on that. We can't, that's not something we control through the state.
So the state?
I don't know. I see it coming down through Hopkins.
And of course, the fire district, we don't have control over, but the quarterly tax, we do, we do.
We do the best we can.
But what I'm just saying is that if you, from our point of view, whether it's a fire district tax or a town tax, it all comes out of the same wallet. That's the issue that we're dealing with. And, you know, obviously, we, we take a look at property taxes, not only in Hopkinton, but surrounding communities, as we do as well. And, you know, I really appreciate this drop in property taxes that we had. It's just the totality of it that we're trying to deal with. And now remember, I excluded everything from the state in this number, except for, you know, what you said about the 825.
Right.
So I just, think about it as you're, as you're dealing with this in terms of the kind of revenue we have to generate to cover these taxes. And that's really, that's really the deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good talking. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approved joint meeting minutes of September 18th, 2014. Approved petition of National Grid and Verizon for two new polls on Tom aquag valley road. Set January 5th, 2015 as a hearing day for renewal of campground licenses. Set January 20th, 2015 as a second town council meeting in January due to Martin Luther King Day holiday. Set January 20th, 2015 as a hearing day for the renewal of commercial haulers licenses. Approved refunds submitted by the tax collector. Okay, anything need to be pulled?
Was Donna Walsh at that meeting?
What meeting, Scott?
The joint meeting.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, because it says in there, because I brought up her name because she had mentioned about she wouldn't introduce any legislation that everybody signed up on and looks like she was there. But I won't, you know, I won't pull a minute for that, but it's just, is that correct?
All right, so a motion to approve the consent agenda is read.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Who's the second?
It's Scott, do you see? Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
Am I going to have to abstain because I wasn't at that September 18th meeting?
Yeah.
Can I? Okay, should I abstain from the whole thing?
No, just in the minutes.
Okay, so.
Well, the motion was to approve the consent agenda, so if you want to do something different, then it's a separate motion.
Okay. Then I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda, except for the joint meeting minutes of September 18th, 2014.
That I can second.
Okay, motion made in second.
Oh, oh, sorry. Just moving right along here, moving right along.
All those in favor?
Sorry.
All right.
Sorry, Laurie.
Good catch, Laurie. First public forum, anyone out there wishing to be heard?
We didn't vote yet.
Let's see, the last motion was the minutes or the consent. Which one?
We still have to approve.
We still have to vote.
Right.
Still have to vote on the joint meeting minutes.
On the joint meeting, okay, I'm sorry. You, okay.
Just make that a correction that I mentioned Donna Walsh, I remember me doing that and I don't look paid, they're paying me.
Well, we already approved those minutes.
Someone?
Okay.
I move that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
David's abstaining. Okay. All right.
Let's try to do it.
First public forum again? No one out, okay. Town manager report, Bill McGary.
Thank you. On October 16th, building and zoning official Brad Ward and I participated in a conference call with Derek Pelletier and others from the State of Rhode Island Department of Administration regarding the upcoming pilot program for the statewide e-permitting system for building permits. Now, this is still a couple of years away, but we provided him with some information on the status of issuing these building permits in Hopkinton at this time and the feasibility of switching over to the electronic statewide permitting system in the future. Next year, the Department of Administration is preparing to run a pilot program with 10 cities and towns to, to create a statewide electronic building permit system. And basically, the way it works is that anybody who wants to apply for a building permit will be able to do so online and then it's directly electronically transmitted to the individual cities and towns. They still have the last say, the cities and towns. It has to be approved by the building, the building official. And then there's credit card payments that have to be made to the town before any permit could be issued statewide. So it's similar to the e-ticketing series that the police departments use where everything is electronically transmitted to the state and back to the cities. That's something that'll be coming up in the years ahead. I'm very pleased to report that on the water meter testing, after a series of meetings to ensure that all the proper planning had been taken place, the towns of Richmond and Hopkinton shut down the water line at the town line on Friday, October 17th, beginning at 9:00 PM to inspect and test the water meters. Kent Pump and Engineering conducted the tests and the water line was shut off for approximately 2 hours and 50 minutes, as I said, beginning at 9:00 PM on that Friday night. Council President Frank Landoffi and I were there for the entire time. And it should be noted that the town of Hopkinton really went out of its way to notify, individually sent letters to the 48 users on our water line advising them of the water interruption. And we also sent out a code red notification message and placed it on the town website posting. Consequently, we received no calls or complaints regarding the water interruption from anybody in Hopkinton. A few days later, we met with Rob Brock, Richmond Town Administrator, the water administrator Leon Milas, and Len Maynard of Kent Pump and Engineering at the Richmond Town Hall. And basically, after a review, Kent Pump and Engineering made a determination that both of those meters were working properly. What wasn't working properly was the regulator, which is kind of like the odometer. The first three digits had been frozen and that was the problem. Fortunately for us, it's, the cost is for the regulator is only about $100 and the water meter testing services is $750. So it's about a cost to the town of about $1,000, which is really, really cheap and inexpensive because had we buy a new meter, especially the large meter, it would have been tens of thousands of dollars. So we kind of dodged the bullet on that and it worked out very well, so. And when they did test the regulator, they didn't have to turn off the water to do so. So everything seems to be status quo at this point. October 22nd, Chief Palmer, EMA Director Ron McDonald, Hope Valley Chief Fires Fred Stanley, Hope Valley Ambulance Chief Fred Sherman, and I met with Elizabeth McDonald from the American Red Cross in the conference room of the Hopkinton Police Department to basically listen to her presentation on the various level of services and shelters provided by the American Red Cross. They have been very helpful during the last several years in providing shelters and other services during emergency situations. It basically was a meeting to, an informative meeting to define the roles of the Red Cross versus those of the states and local communities. So it was very helpful. I'm going to skip the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District award because that was on the, the agenda, so town council, council president can chime in on that. And just lastly, on Wednesday, October 29th, Planner Jim Lambier, Brian Rosso, Dave Caswell, and I met with FEMA Representative Annie Donovan from the Boston office and the RE/Ma Representative Mike Cogan at town hall to discuss the final closeout procedures of that South Drive drainage improvement program and a few other penny grant applications. And we also conducted a final South Drive site visit for the FEMA officials as part of the closeout process. They're required to make a physical inspection of the site in order to, it's like the final hurdle in the reimbursement process for the towns.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bill, folks? Yes, Sylvia?
Bill, the water meter testing, oh, and, and I have to say, and I never got a call either, not a complaint, not even, not even a question. So it was, obviously you informed them very well and it went well, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
I wanted to ask, have you seen the written report from the engineer yet? If you haven't seen it, is that something you can request from Richmond? We should be getting some documentation, whatever he wrote.
Right. I can, I'll call Rob Brock tomorrow and if there was one that was written up, then we should, we really should have a copy of it, so.
And the last thing is just, so folks know, that the amount of money that would have to be paid for this testing, that revenue is, is coming from the water line users themselves. It's from that account. So it's the town of Hopkinton, but it's the water line users who paid their own bills. And that's a cost of doing business for them. Thank you. That was my question. Thank you, Sylvia.
And just to add on that water testing, you know, Bill and I were there and I tell you, those guys earned their money, so that, I mean, we think we made.
Unpleasant.
Well, yeah, they were down in that hole and it was filling up pretty fast and there was a lot of things, a lot more than we thought was involved and the, I think we got our money's worth for sure, so. All right, thanks, Bill. Under new business tonight, folks, I put together a resolution, discuss and consider a resolution supporting the elimination of the state income tax on Social Security for Rhode Island residents. I got this idea, I was actually listening to the radio and I heard Speaker Matty Ello was saying that it was gaining traction up north, so anytime there's less taxes, especially on the lower income and middle-class families, I cheer. And they say it's gaining traction. So what my thought was is to put together, it was a hastily put-together resolution, but it had some fine points, I think, that are worthy of mentioning. And hopefully, we can come together.
Will you read it?
Yes. And, and put forward our two cents and send it to our legislative delegation. So I will speak to, the town of Hopkinton resolution. Whereas the Hopkinton Town Council desires to address the issue of state income tax on Social Security benefits, whereas Rhode Island is one of 14 states that still taxes Social Security, and whereas there would be an average tax savings of $331 per year for residents if the state tax on Social Security benefits were eliminated, whereas elimination of the state tax on Social Security benefits would improve the lives of the middle-class families, and whereas elimination of the tax on Social Security benefits would potentially keep Rhode Island residents from relocating their primary residence to states such as Florida, whereas the elimination of state tax on Social Security benefits would improve the overall Rhode Island economy with residents staying in Rhode Island and buying their goods and services here in the state instead of elsewhere. There's actually one more point I had emailed Lisa and I want to bring it up. The overall cost of the elimination of the state tax on Social Security is about $22 million statewide. On a budget of about $8 billion, I got to think that they should be able to find it in that larger budget. So that's obviously predicated on that happening. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Hopkinton Town Council hereby urges passes of legislation by the Rhode Island General Assembly during the upcoming 2015 legislative session repealing the tax on Social Security benefits.
I move that we approve, well, I'd like to play with it if it's all right. A move that we approve the resolution and send it to the House and Senate leadership and also to every city in town via email. That makes it easier.
So that sounds good. Yes, Paul?
I have a question. When you have the whereas, the elimination, blah, 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 would improve the lives of middle-class families? Can I say low and middle?
Sure.
Middle-class families?
That's fine.
I didn't, I think low-income families still have to pay the tax.
Well, it's also based on their income.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very, very sliding scale, very, yeah.
But even so.
I think the cutoff is like $80,000 or something. If you make $80,000, it used to be, it was like, if you made, at one time, if you made $80,000 or more, you paid tax on half of your Social Security. I mean, it's changed over the years, so, but anyway, yeah, there's definitely a tax. It's not that you pay a tax if you make $10,000, but there is a higher cutoff. But that higher cutoff years ago was a higher cutoff and, geez, you can hardly get by on anything these days. But anyway, just so you know.
And I hope it gains traction. Like I said, I think if, again, the speaker's speaking about it, I'm encouraged and I'm hoping that we can find the money to do this.
Maybe they'll phase it in over a couple of years.
Right. Yeah.
I saw both Rabundo and Fung touch on it during the debate.
Oh, really? Oh, good.
They did, they did. And, you know, they didn't say absolutely it's going to happen, but they touched on it, which is good.
I think it's something to at least address, at least put it out so people can discuss it and make a determination. I mean, that way the legislature can discuss it. I'm sure they can change it, but it would be a really nice thing to begin.
I heard about it while on the treadmill, listening to Gene Valasente on the radio. And Speaker Matty Ello was there speaking on it, so. Yeah, all right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Yes, Scott did.
Okay. Motion made in second. Any further discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Bill and I attended the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District meeting at the South Kingstown Land Trust building in, sort of in Mattoonik, actually. And we got this nice plaque from the town. I'll read it. It says Excellence in Promotion of Conservation Land and Water Resources Award, Town of Hopkinton, for your outstanding contributions and efforts towards the mission of the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District and the protection of your town's land and water resources 2014. It was a very, very nice award.
I was going to hold it up for the camera. There's no way they could see it. It's all, it's all in wood.
Gary Marsh designed it and, you know, it was a great, we had a good dinner, it was pulled pork and whatever else we had. And, you know, I mentioned this when, when I was asked to come up and speak at the event. This really is, the council certainly had a part in it, but a large part also came with the Land Trust and the Conservation Commission. And I want to especially ask, well, I had asked Harvey Bufer to be here, but I guess he couldn't make it. But I wanted to give a special shout-out to him because he got some recognition at that award banquet for his efforts specifically in our town with the mapping and all the things that he does behind the scenes with the GPS and just an outstanding.
I don't know how he survives. It's like he works full-time for the town. I don't know what he does for a living.
Yeah, I don't know. But, you know, this is what really speaks volumes to his efforts and to the Conservation Commission and Land Trust and all that they do every day and their volunteer. And I want to thank, thank them for all their efforts.
I really, I think that they've done just an amazing job, too. We were not given a beach, we were given an aquifer. That is a jewel. When we look at California and the West and the Midwest and the drought, and we are sitting on this enormous primary aquifer of pristine water. We have kept really good care of it. The town has overall, not just, and that was before you had conservation, before you had Land Trust.[1663.41] had Land Trust. I think the entire town has always cared for this, cared for the land. They know that this is part of our economic development, is having the pristine waters, streams, rivers, lakes. Our aquifer is just a jewel, and I am so proud that they recognize that, since a lot of towns don't have one at all.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? Next up on our agenda is boards and commissions. Consider appointment to the juvenile hearing board.
I'd like to make a motion to consider appointment to the juvenile hearing board of Juve Dumas.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion, folks?
She's wonderful, she's done a great job.
Mm-hmm. She's been there a while. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Last public forum. No, Agnes, no? Before your retirement?
She's gonna speak up after she retires.
Oh, after, okay.
She'll say, "What are you doing now? What do you mean?"
Before we adjourn, I, I wanna just say thanks to Scott, Sylvia, Barbara, and David, Town Manager, Town Solicitor, Clerk's Office, every department head in the town for the last two years. It's been a pleasure. I look forward to hopefully serving them in, in the future, and, and I wanna thank everyone for their contributions to the, to the council in the last two years. I think we have a lot to be proud of. Taxes were reduced, we got a couple of new businesses, one very large, one very small, relocating to town, and a road referendum that we never thought would come again, and we got that on the, on the referendum passed with the voters, and we can begin to, begin to improve some roads, so. And that's just a, a small tidbit of what we've accomplished, among other things, with the regulations and subregs and zoning and all that good stuff that we took part in. But I wanna say thank you to everyone for their professionalism and cooperation, and I wish everyone luck, good luck, including Tom in the election tomorrow, and that's